How about that? This meeting of the Committee on Health and Human Services, this public hearing is now in order. I'd like to thank everyone who has signed on to join us this evening. We have a number of people who have already signed on to speak. And then we have some, we have three people who are presenting initially to kind of lay out before all of us what their considerations are, what they're paying attention to, and what they would like all of us to be attentive to as well. So just by way of a couple of opening remarks, so this evening we gather to consider in real time the challenges that we face everywhere in this country in making healthcare accessible and affordable to all. And that is something that is truly problematic in our society unless you're not paying attention or unless you haven't been affected. And there are some people who have been insulated from, you know, the worst of it, that is for sure. It was none other than, I'm going to put a name out here that some of you might recall, it was none other than Walter Cronkite, the most trusted man in America, who many years ago said that American, a number of years ago, he said this 40 years ago, that America's healthcare system is neither healthy, caring, nor a system. I also see this moment as an opportunity to recall someone who I have always had great regard and great respect for, and that is Paul Farmer, a physician and first and foremost a teacher who founded the organization called Partners in Health. Farmer reminded us that medicine should be viewed as social justice work in a world that is so sick and so ribbon by inequities. And he saw it, and he, and as he saw it, the delivery of high-quality care is both medical and moral as well. So as we gather here this evening, I mean, clearly as a governmental entity at the county level, there are obviously hurdles that we would face in terms of legal authority and legislative output based upon what we talk about here this evening. So even though we might not have the legal authority to effectively act, we do feel that we have a moral obligation to create a platform, to create a stage, so that we can elevate the attention that this particular all-encompassing issue deserves and requires. So this evening, we are going to hear from any number of people. Your fellow citizens are here to share their often anguished experiences with our healthcare system. And the hope is that we will heighten awareness and that we will mobilize a good deal more activity around this and the issues that surround it as well. And by way of beginning this evening, we have our three presenters. We have Ed Christar, who is the co-founder of the Western Pennsylvania Coalition for Single-Payer Healthcare, also a former union representative, Pennsylvania staff, nurses, and allied associates, and the past president of the Butler County Labor Council. We have Dr. Judy Albert, Physicians for National Healthcare of Western Pennsylvania, and the Western PA Coalition for Single-Payer Healthcare, and Dr. Claire Cullen as well, a child psychologist affiliated with Physicians for a National Healthcare Program and the Western PA Coalition for Single-Payer Healthcare. So I would invite whoever among the three of you would like to open to get us started this evening.
It's on. How is that?
That's good.
I can tell it's on. Well, first of all, I just want to thank Allegheny County Council, all of the representatives that are here who voted to allow us to have this public hearing. It was a little bit of a hard sell to get the idea going that maybe locally we can do something about these problems that affect people nationally. So I'm very grateful. Also, Mr. Klein, I think your comments are spot on. Paul Farmer is also a hero of mine, and I think Walter Cronkite is also very correct. So I am going to start today talking about medical debt, why is our system broken, and how can we fix it? We're here to talk about the crisis in healthcare in this country and bring it home to where we live, actually in Allegheny County. We will talk about the massive amount of debt carried by many, why it is this way, and what is the solution. So first of all, we should talk a little bit about what's the impact of medical debt? What are the consequences? Well, it's a very widespread problem, and often it's hard to quantify. We had a hard time trying to get any statistics on how many people in the county are in debt. Medical debt can be hidden as credit card debt often, and that doesn't mean that people aren't still having problems with their credit ratings and so forth. And make no mistake, people are suffering as a result of having medical debt. They avoid medical care to avoid more debt, they get sicker, they have GoFundMe pages to help out. It's absolutely ridiculous in the world's wealthiest country that this is happening. So some of the statistics, well, everybody knows that the costs of premiums are rising. Americans may pay upwards of $4,000 a year for their insurance coverage but get no coverage for mental health or dental care. The debt situation in the country is affecting 100 million people, and it prevents families, especially black families, from building wealth, savings, and assets that are needed to access America's high-priced medical system. People suffer, they avoid medical care, and they get sicker. And finally, a cruel reality is that a cancer diagnosis is often financially devastating. Cancer patients are far more likely to declare bankruptcy than people without cancer. So first, we need to understand exactly how insidious the invasion of profiteering has become into our health system. Top of the list, health insurance. Premiums for employer-sponsored health insurance have increased by 200%, 200% since 1999, while wages have increased only 47%. More importantly, we pay the premiums, but we can't use the insurance until we have met ridiculous deductibles, sometimes up to $10,000 for a family. How is that possibly insurance? Runaway prices on pharmaceuticals are reported everywhere. Most of us have heard about at least the price gouging for insulin, but there are many other drugs that have become just unaffordable for people who desperately need them. The federal government made a deal with the devil during the Bush administration and gave away the ability to negotiate drug prices for Medicare Part D, the part that covers prescription medications for seniors. The VA, on the other hand, does retain the ability to negotiate on prices, and the statistics on healthcare and health outcomes in the VA actually surpass the health outcomes of any other group of insured patients in the country. We also have hospitals, nursing homes, and emergency clinics that are run by private corporations. They're incentivized to charge outrageous prices because they know that the price will get negotiated with the insurance company. But individuals who are uninsured or out of network will pay full price or get into some sort of negotiation to try to get the price down, and that happens. People who have medical debt are advised never to pay if they have no insurance, in particular, never to pay at the first price and get into some sort of haggling battle to try and get the price down. This applies also to nonprofit hospitals, as we are very familiar with here in Western Pennsylvania, but that's a tale for another day. So it would be helpful to understand the basics of how we actually do healthcare in the United States. Unlike every other economically-developed nation in the world, we are the only one without a universal system. What we have is piecemeal and fragmented, and so complex as to defy understanding. Most people have health insurance through their employer, over 50%. The payment to guarantee that health insurance is shared by both the employer and the worker, but some people have to use the Affordable Care Act Marketplace. Just think about how that name does not conjure up an image of caring. Some are covered by public programs that are increasingly being handed to corporations, and some are left out completely because they make too much money for public healthcare or it's too difficult to navigate the system, or various other barriers to make it difficult to get Medicaid. First of all, is private insurance really so bad? Well, understand that health insurance contributes exactly nothing to healthcare. It doesn't provide care. In fact, the business model of health insurance is to deny claims and healthcare services to their subscribers so that more of the premiums that are, again, paid upfront can be held as revenue and profit. This is something that became excruciatingly clear to me in my 30 years of medical practice as I witnessed how insurers bent over backwards to create reasons why services weren't covered or were covered at 1% of the price, or some other nonsense that you can't even dream up. And it comes down to this: corporations exist to make profit for their shareholders. Again, this is the business model: upfront payments, no refunds, 80% of premiums must go to patient care. That rule was developed by the Affordable Care Act, but that leaves 20% of the insurance revenues and premiums to be spent on marketing, administration, and also includes their profit. So on average, insurance companies actually do spend about 15% on overhead, which actually turns out to be over $200 billion. It's important to recognize all that money is something that could be used to help fund a public system. In comparison, Medicare, probably our best model, although imperfect, of a public healthcare system, is extremely efficient. In Medicare, 98% of Medicare dollars go to patient care; their overhead runs at 2% to 3%. You may ask, well, what about the ACA? Oh, I think I forgot to change my slides. There we go. Well, by now, it should be apparent that insurance companies are reaping the benefits of the ACA deals, while the bronze, silver, and gold plans on the marketplace are drowning folks in copays and deductibles. The ACA is neither a solution for medical debt, but it is a part of the problem. What about our public programs? Well, the Medicare Act was signed into law in 1965 after historic political horse trading. Originally, Medicare was to be a social health insurance for the elderly and the poor of all ages. However, southern governors and state and national legislators, also known as Dixiecrats, were adamantly opposed to an entitlement such as Medicare for the Poor. So the compromise was that Medicaid became a separate, much less ambitious, and means-tested program for the poor, meaning that qualifications for the program exist in every state, unlike Medicare, where all you have to do is be 65 and older. There are numerous barriers to Medicaid with eligibility requirements; they're different from state to state. It makes it difficult if you wanted to move from state to another state because the requirements for eligibility are different. Medicaid reimbursement is also lower than commercial insurance, and this has caused many specialist medical providers and physicians to opt out of participation in Medicaid. So let's talk a little bit about what exactly is privatization. This definition of privatization, I think, is helpful. Privatization is the transfer of control over public goods into private hands. So Medicare is funded by tax dollars; it was created to be a public good, a social health insurance program for seniors and people with disabilities. Over the years, however, the control of Medicare has been transferred to private industry, which makes a profit and manages our healthcare. The transfer of Medicare to private hands has accelerated under both Republican and In Medicaid, 40 out of 50 of our states now have private insurance-managed care that run most of their Medicaid programs. In Medicare, 50% of Medicare beneficiaries are now enrolled in Medicare Advantage instead of original Medicare, which operates as a fee-for-service program. Medicare Advantage, on the other hand, is private insurance managed care. Managed care is sometimes a difficult concept to explain, and in operation, it is actually quite complicated. But we'll try going through this slide. So managed care is the framework on which Medicare Advantage and the private sector Medicaid plans are based. In general, it works by taking public dollars, the Medicare dollars are federal, the Medicaid are federal and state, that are paid upfront to private insurance, as in Medicare Advantage and Medicaid PPO or HMO private insurance plans. Since the private insurers are paid upfront as a middleman by the federal and other public dollars to manage healthcare of a group of individuals, they are motivated to put up barriers like preauthorizations and denials and create narrow networks, anything to reduce the number of claims that they must pay from the funds that they've already collected upfront. A new opportunity exists for fraud and has been utilized and documented in the media quite effectively in the past few years. And that's because the actual amount, especially in the case of Medicare Advantage, that the federal government pays Medicare Advantage to manage the Medicare claims, is negotiable. And what that means is that the characteristics of patients in any Medicare Advantage group can be inflated as being more sick and needing more care and therefore getting more money from CMS, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, in order to advance the profit of the Medicare Advantage company. And this, of course, has been well documented by every large, the top eight insurers that supply Medicare Advantage programs. So how much is Medicare Advantage worth to private health insurance? Well, the two largest providers of Medicare Advantage would be United Healthcare and Humana. They have the largest market share and are available in more counties around the United States than any of the other health insurance companies. United Healthcare reported a profit of $5 billion for one quarter of 2022, largely due to government subsidization from CMS, from paying for Medicare Advantage. That's not, that profit is not all from Medicare Advantage, but it's, quite a lot of it is. And then, Humana, in early 2023, announced that it's leaving the commercial employer-based insurer market. In other words, they're not going to be supplying any health insurance to companies who want to buy it for their employees. And the reason is that they've made so much money doing Medicare Advantage, they're focusing all of their efforts on that market. So all of this healthcare spending in the United States is calculated from healthcare premiums from private citizens, from employers, from the government, and it turns out that in 2023, it's going to total in the $4 trillion range, which is just an astounding number that most of us can't really wrap our heads around. And we are spending twice as much per capita as every other economically-developed country in the world. And some of this money is directly subsidizing insurance corporations. However, the U.S. trails other nations in health outcomes. Looking at the health outcomes, these are data compiled by the Organization of Economically-Developed Countries. In 2018, USA ranked last in life expectancy when compared with six other countries, all of whom have some sort of universal health coverage. Infant mortality, last. Maternal mortality, worst. We rank last in all of these things. We're especially concerned about maternal mortality in our region because in Allegheny County, there have been well-reported racial disparities in maternal mortality, and a lot of hand-waving about what are we going to do about this. And while having access to healthcare for everybody is not going to solve all these problems, it will sure make some sort of headway. So at this point, it should be obvious that the $100 million households that are impacted by medical debt in the United States is actually the expected outcome of our system. We're spending $4 trillion on healthcare and getting substandard care, worsening outcomes, and we're going bankrupt in the process. So what should a healthcare system really look like? Well, it should be universal, it should be affordable, it should be accountable, accessible, comprehensive, and it should involve high-quality evidence-based care, and it should be equitable. So we all can agree that that's what we want, and now we have to agree on how we would get there. So how do you fix it? Well, from our perspective, you fix it with national single payer. What is national single payer? Well, it's like Medicare, but better. Nobody is left out. It includes prescription drugs, vision, hearing, and dental care. It's funded by progressive taxation, savings on administrative costs, bulk purchase of drugs, and the existing funding from Medicare and Medicaid. In fact, a number of economic studies have come up with the conclusion that the savings would fund full coverage. So the savings on prescription drugs and administration would be the two biggest ones. And also, 253 economists have also come to the conclusion that the time is now for Medicare for All. That was actually about four years ago, so we're behind. And, you know, finally, I think, bringing back the point to us here in Allegheny County, what would be the impact? Well, like I mentioned before, insurance premiums are rising at a much faster pace than wages. That's not something that the county is immune to. Every year, they have to negotiate the insurance premiums that they're going to pay for their county employees, and it looks like there would potentially be a savings of nearly $100 million in insurance premiums when budgets were being made. Furthermore, I know this from my own practice in medicine, where we provided insurance coverage for our 30 or so employees, and every year, we had to renegotiate the contracts, and we had no idea how we were going to budget for the increases. There were never decreases in the premiums that we would face that next year. So imagine what kind of budget consistency that would allow. Also, what happens when people don't have health insurance? They have crises that are often addressed by county safety net services that are related to mental health, other untreated health conditions that we end up paying for as a public anyway. And finally, the resulting predicted wage increases that would occur when employers are no longer burdened by these huge premiums would provide an engine for economic growth, and that's something that we all want. So I'd like to ask people in the room to imagine a world where people are free and healthcare is treated as a human right. People would be free to change jobs without losing coverage or moving out of state. People would be free to get and stay healthy. People would be free to leave a bad marriage without losing coverage from their spouse. People would be free to have more real wages to invest in education and housing and all the things that would go into living a meaningful life. This is the world I want to see, and I think you all would agree. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Christar, would you like to?
I'm going to go up here if that's okay.
Sure, sure, please.
Yep.
I also want to reiterate Judy's thanks to the council, to our chairperson, Paul Klein, especially Anita, who helped us shepherd this through. And I think, I would like to start out by saying, like, why are we here and what can we do? When I say why are we here, because we initially came to the county and asked for the possibility of holding some type of a referendum. And why did we say that we needed a referendum? What would a referendum do? And what it was based on was, last November, in Wisconsin and Illinois and a number of other states in previous years, essentially what they did, and these were in rural counties, rural, small-town counties, that said, "We're tired of paying all these insurance premiums of hundreds of thousands of dollars and all the problems that Judy just reiterated with private insurance: high deductibles, low plans, debts, whatever." So they put on their ballot, they put on a ballot referendum in Wisconsin and a couple of counties and in Illinois. Should the county citizens ask their congressional representatives to push for a national health system that would be a nonprofit system that would cover everybody? And believe it or not, in these counties, there was a groundswell of support in favor of this referendum. And these were counties that were not traditionally Democratic. In fact, what happened was the county referendum in Wisconsin actually got more votes than any Democrat who was running. So there was more favor. And so the question is, why would we, why would we do this here? Well, from our point of view as a, as a single-payer organization, which I said, I was the president of the Butler Labor Council. We had many people for 15 years. We would talk about the problems of negotiating contracts. I negotiated numerous contracts with nurses throughout Western Pennsylvania, and the question always arose is, this is a system that shouldn't go on. It really, it really needs changed. So we would go to our local representatives, and the local representatives would kind of say, "Oh, yeah, this is a good idea, but you know, Ed, the insurance industry is so powerful, but I'll sign on to your bill." And maybe what we could do is go, start, start with the next slide. They would say, "We'll sign on to your bill for Medicare for All," but they essentially never did anything for it. So why would we ask for a referendum? Because we believe that every single poll and every single public opinion survey says that people are ready for fundamental change in the direction that we're talking about. What we lack is there's a political disconnect. And so our point here today is we want to thank the council for doing this. And why are we thanking you? Well, the reality is, and I know Jim Furlough, unfortunately, you know, Jim Furlough is no longer with us, but in 2000, I think it was 2007, when he was still with the city council, the city council passed a resolution for Medicare for All. I know the county council did it. In fact, I think your chief executive in 2012 or 2013 was the initiator of a, of a resolution for Medicare for All. And I think in '18, you passed the resolution. So the point is, what good are the resolutions? And I say that as a labor person, you know why? And we joke about it because in, when we were, when I was in the labor movement and when ACA was being passed, there were 600 unions around the country that passed resolutions for Medicare for All, for a single-payer system, because of all the inequities. For whatever reason, that political disconnect today is sharper than it was then. We need to understand that we need a broad-based, public movement that's going to challenge and put forth alternatives. And how do you do that? Well, one of the ways is that you're starting here today, and we're asking that you kind of like, put some life into your resolution. And we have a couple of recommendations. Put some energy into it, put some resources into it, use the power that you have of your pulpit to actually begin to make the changes that are necessary. Because if you don't do it, it's pretty clear that our local congressional people, they talk about it, but they're not here. They're not working on the movement, they're not bringing it up. Yeah, we had how many people in Allegheny County just lost their Medicaid benefits? Not one single person from Congress said anything about it. We have infant mortality going up, we have maternal mortality going up, as if their heads are in the sand. You can't keep crying about, "I'm worried about these people, I'm worried about these people," but when the time comes to do anything, they're cowards. And it's really, we're at like a tipping point, and that's why we're happy to at least begin this conversation. And the question is, well, what do you mean by a conversation? Well, we need for, instead of having lies of omission, instead of having people ... Well, we need for, instead of having lies of omission, instead of having people ignore this, how could you not have media coverage on an issue that affects 100 million people that are in debt? How could you have to beg to get coverage for something that people should be out there screaming about and talking about? And you're losing votes by doing it. You're ignoring the issues of the people. And so we're here, and we're, again, we're thankful that you're, you're able to start this process. So I just have a couple of factual pieces. When people say they need educated, well, I think that's a good start. So four in 10 adults currently have debt due to medical or dental bills. The other thing is, what kind of a society has, it says that if you have a tooth rotting out, or if you're poisoned through, that you somehow have to get separate coverage somewhere else that's not related to your health? It's absurd. Okay, next slide. Half of adults are unable to pay for a $500 medical bill. Part of our problem is simple poverty, simple low wages. Real wages are going down. You know, the UAW is on strike, and I have to tell people that if, and nobody wants to listen to that, the UAW is on strike against the four or three automakers. Do you know in 2014, there was a story that that was 100 years since Henry Ford instituted the $5 a day wage, $5 a day in 1914? Do you know that in 2014, the starting wage of an autoworker was the literal equivalent of $5 a day in 1914 terms? So you want to know why people can't pay their bills? You want to know why they're in debt? You want to know why the profits are so high? Well, it's right here in front of you. Of course, if you put your head in the sand and you run away from it, no one will ever know about it. Next one. Half of adults say it's difficult to afford healthcare costs and shooting large shares of the uninsured black. So that's the other point. Most of these things are affecting women, they're affecting the poor, they're affecting minorities. And we haven't even got, because Allegheny County is not, is technically not a rural area, the rural white people, they're the ones who people say, "Oh, they're the ogres," you know, "It's good for them that they suffer." They're the ones that are suffering too. Rural hospitals are closing down every day because of lack of money. And this would all be changed if you had a Medicare for All system. How would it change? You would have global budgets for the hospitals. UPMC would not be able to run around and take the profit from their hospitals in Pittsburgh and just invest it here. They would literally, there would be some public concern manifested. You'd have to say, "Well, you can't just close down hospitals in poor areas, you can't just have infant mortality this way." There would be modifications, which is why we need single payer. Next one. Okay, 1/3 of adults say they have a family and they have skip medical treatment. Again, these are all facts, these are from Kaiser Family Foundation, and many of our, our peoples use these facts and figures just to show people this extent of our problem. Next, dental services. I say, this is the top of the list where people deny due to cost. 35% of the population. Next. Who has difficulty with prescription drugs? 25% of the population. And as it goes up, the more drugs you take, the harder it is for people to maintain. Next. 25% of adults have not taken medication prescribed because they don't have the money. Next. Large share of the population. Unexpected medical bills consume 58% of people's worries. Next. We were, kind of went through this, but again, I think it's worth reiterating. Why, why did we propose a referendum? Well, one of the reasons is because there's a large portion of the population that is with this. Over the time, there's at least 50 or 60 constant percentage more than that of people who want to change. We need to get, get it organized. There's this political disconnect that we're hoping that we can start, and remember, look through your history books. Not one single passage of any significant piece of legislation has ever occurred unless there's been a groundswell of support from the people. And if the leaders don't lead, it's up to you on the local level to be hopeful and begin that process. Provide leadership and a path for real solutions, getting people, as we say, you know, with the unions, we said, 600 union endorsements, but you can paper your walls with all those endorsements if they don't mean anything, if they don't bring any action. Move away from political horse trading and lobbying toward popular action. Single payer, Medicare for All, anything positive is not going to be passed through political horse trading. There has to be a greater public participation. Local referendums show concrete support and apply pressure on your congresspeople to act. And that's really why we would ask in, in some of our demands here, is for you to seriously consider changing the methodology or the regulations, or however you want to say, in your charter, to make things like this relatively more accessible for, for the public. Because we know, we try to do this, the, the amount of signatures that's required, I think it was like 25,000, it's just almost unburdenable, or it's, it's too much of a burden, excuse me. Next. Again, why isn't this public? 330,000 people dead during COVID, simply because they had no healthcare, simply because they just lacked healthcare. It's, you know, somebody should, somebody should be paying the consequences for this, but apparently, it's just okay. Next. This is an anecdotal story from me. I'm from Oakmont. One of my councilpersons in Oakmont, a year or so ago, said, "You know what, Ed? There's a big problem with the EMS that governs Oakmont and Verona and that, some of the Springdale communities along the river. They can't hold any staff together. They're, they're, they're going bankrupt, they're not reimbursed." So he asked me to intervene, at least sit on the board or go to the meetings and figure out what's going on. I ended up not doing it, but my wife did, and congratulations to her. She got, she had a big headache after that. But anyway, so this is, this was a story in the Sharon Herald, that, that the problem of EMS, emergency medical services, is not something that can be tweaked by individual boroughs and municipalities. The problem is systemic. There's low reimbursements from the insurance company, Medicare and Medicaid pay low, and the staffing is a constant turnover in these agencies. And again, these aren't people that are just kind of like delivering candy bars to people. You know, they're life-saving services that must be funded properly, and they're not. They're simply not being funded. And that was the takeaway from, from participating in this endeavor. Next, profits. Six months of this year, so people say, "Where are you going to get the money from?" Well, for the last six months of 2023, the big four profit insurers made $40 billion in profit. Next, 40 billion. Healthcare CEOs, in addition to 40 billion in profit, they made $4 billion in salaries, salaries alone. And it says, that's, that's the amount of the GDP of Sierra Leone. And again, the last question or the last statement, this is the bitter fruit that we reap from telling healthcare to act like a business. Next. Now, I, this is, this is, this is another interesting one. Pittsburgh City Paper, look at the date of that, 2006. Why do we use that date? 2006 is when we had a hearing, when the late John Conyers came here, who was the sponsor of HR 676, one of the first single payer bills. And we had 300 people at Temple Sinai in Squirrel Hill, and the, the then-congressperson, Mike Doyle, came to the meeting and he said, "Well, I'm not really going to sign on to that bill, because it's not, it's not worth it." And he ended up signing on to the bill, and there was a big cheer from the crowd. Everybody said, "It's great, Mike Doyle's on our side," you know, everybody said, "It's wonderful." And the next day, in the city paper, and this is kind of indicative of the kind of people that, that are running our alleged support for single payer. "I'm going to put my name on this bill because I know it's never going to pass out of committee," he told the audience. The catch here is, and the next quote, "We know that as long as Congress exists the way it is today with a Republican majority, Conyers' bill is never getting out of committee." Well, guess what? Two years later, you had a supermajority of Democrats. You had a supermajority in the House, you had a supermajority in the Senate, and you had a Democratic president, and guess what they did? They arrested people like Claire Cohen and Judy Albert on the Senate floor when they wanted to testify for Medicare for All single payer, they arrested those doctors. Who arrested them? The Senate, Max Bockus called the police and said, "Take those people out, let's put them in jail." So the idea that somehow this is an ogre of, of the Republicans is just, it's not true. And, and that's why our group is nonpartisan, we're, we're, we're willing to work with anybody. It's like, this is an issue, it's a public issue, it's a people's issue, and this was what we face today. Literally, it's what we face today. Next. What can we do? As I said before, pursue changes to reduce obstacles for non-binding referendum. I'd like you to consider doing some research on the impact of medical debt and the numbers of uninsured, underinsured, et cetera, in Allegheny County citizens and, and the communities. In other words, like, if you would have the light of day, how many people in Braddock? How many people in Wilkinsburg? How many people in various parts? What is their medical debt? Or that, what's their age? What's their race? What's their sex? And put that out into the public, you can start a deeper conversation with people. And encourage and support resolutions from other municipalities in the county. Like I said, when I negotiated union contracts, you've got every school district here that is facing the same problem. Every municipality is facing the same issue. High premiums, profits, lower coverages, higher, higher deductibles. It's a, it's a dog chasing its tail. This is what you have to do. And help support, and this is from the late Senator Jim Furlough, the last thing was that, since he was a fervent supporter of, of National Medicare for All, what he wanted to do was try to start a national database of all local elected officials at the municipalities that had passed resolutions for this, so that we can begin to create a more of a national functioning movement that would, that would not only have, let's say, labor, communities, religious, but also a database of municipalities that, and elected officials that are going in this direction. And that would be things that are, I think, within, in your purview as, as a county. Of course, it's going to take, you know, political motivation, it's going to take some, you know, desire and some leadership, but that's, but that's why you're elected. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you very much. Next is Dr. Claire Cohen.
I too would like to thank the council for allowing us to have this hearing. And I'm a child psychiatrist, okay? Couple things to reference what my other two partners said. One, in terms of maternal mortality, for Black women in the United States, the most recent statistics show that infant mortality for Black women is 69.9 per 100,000 women, almost 70 per 100,000 women. And that, if Black Americans were their own country, we would be number 85 of all the countries in the world. There's about 190 countries, so we would be really far down, way below developed countries and behind some undeveloped countries. And a couple, and one other thing I just want to put in there, I had hoped that three members of my household could come here and testify, because three members had big debt. My daughter had a $4,000 medical bill, which I helped, I was so steaming mad, I helped her negotiate it down to $1,000. And then, of course, who paid it? Me. Her boyfriend had a $1,000 dental bill, and my other son, he had a bill that was almost $1,000. And who pays all these bills right now? Because I'm the doctor? Me. While millions of Americans are drowning in medical debt, big insurers are raking in the cash. In the first half of 2023 alone, the seven biggest for-profit US health insurers raked in over $683 billion in revenues. That's an increase by 11% over the same time last year. Their profits were $40.2 billion, an increase by 8% over the last, same period last year. Over the past few weeks, both the Brookings Institution and the Wall Street Journal published reports on pharmacy benefit managers. The journal reported on how health insurers that own pharmacy benefit managers make patients with cancer and other serious conditions pay thousands of dollars out of their own pockets for cheap, generic drugs as a means to increase their profits. And I would like to tell you that I've been seeing this as a psychiatrist for some of my patients lately, that all of a sudden, they're having to pay much more for their medications. And it's going to get worse because insurance companies are trying to make up for the profits they lost during COVID. How? By increasing premiums, which causes debt, by increasing deductibles, which causes debt, also by using both of those along with increased copays as a way to purge people off roles. The idea that if people have to pay too much, they'll stop bothering us and go somewhere else. Also by more aggressive prior authorizations. I spent over an hour today arguing with some stupid insurance company over a medication that I had a patient who had been on for five years that kept him stable, and all of a sudden, they were going to deny that medication. And I, I actually put, insurance companies will tell me, "We know you're impassioned about your patients, Dr. Cohen." So I, the impassioned psychiatrist, put on the bottom of my form, "You are denying my patient care that has kept him stable for five years, you are harming him." So I'm sure I'm going to hear another about how I'm this impassioned doctor. Also by playing hardball with hospitals and hospital systems in terms of reimbursement. And this means that rural hospitals and hospitals in underserved areas are going to have harder time paying their bills and staying open. And also by pay cuts to health providers. And patients in Medicare and Medicaid are not protected because both have been substantially privatized. About half of all Medicare patients are now under Medicare Advantage, and most states, as my colleague said here, I heard a higher number than 40, but anyway, have privatized their Medicare, they've subcontracted, contracted out to private insurance. So right now, and I'm, I also work at a residential treatment facility, and all of a sudden, it's so hard to get services for my patients because all of a sudden, they're being denied. According to a recent Health and Human Services report, many of these private insurance companies subcontracted to Medicare and Medicaid have been found to unacceptable, to have unacceptably high denial rates for care. And they view these pub, and these, if you look at the industry literature, they often call Medicare and Medicaid cash cows for them. So this money that we're paying in for healthcare for the general public, these private companies are considering their cash cows. The myth that the high cost of American healthcare is due to overuse by patients and that people need skin in the game to keep them from overusing has long been debunked. People don't go to the doctor for fun or enjoyment, they go when they are concerned about their health. Studies from here and around the world show that when people have copays and high deductible and deductibles, period, they don't go for needed preventive and needed early care, putting off visits until conditions worsen and become expensive, which is part of why our system's so expensive, is not only the profits, but people put off care until their, their health is, is more expensive to care for. When care is free and at the point of service, people get inexpensive preventive and early care. A study some years ago showed that if a person with hypertension went to the doctor's office daily to have his or her blood pressure checked, it would still be cheaper than having a stroke, a heart attack, or renal failure, all what happens when you have untreated hypertension. So by having this situation, we're increasing the cost of our medical system. In countries where care is free at the point of service, people don't go sit in the doctor's office all day requesting costly procedures, they go get their preventive and early care so they stay healthier and rarely go on to develop conditions that require costly care. This is why we need single payer healthcare. So that our hard-earned dollars, your hard-earned dollars, that you pay to stay healthy do just that, instead of going to line greedy people's pockets, I'm putting it out there, greedy people's pockets who just want to get rich at your, at the expense of your health. With single payer healthcare, we don't need, we won't need debt relief programs ever again. People will just get good care when it's needed at a much lower price.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Cohen. Well, I, I'd like to thank all three presenters. I think that you, you, you know, obviously made your case in a very, very compelling way, and, you know, all of us here tonight are, are paying attention, and we'd like this, this proceeding, this hearing to be worth more than, well, we, we held the hearing, we checked off the box. hearing, we checked off the box. I think that those who are sitting here this evening are certainly inclined to take this to heart and further pursue this in terms of what our next steps might look like. But we also have others who have signed up this evening to speak. And the council rule is that you get three minutes. So, it's not a lot of time, but, yes.
Do you have a question?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. But I just, just to, so everyone who has signed up will have three minutes to present. And I think we have perhaps 12 people who've signed up to this point. But Ms. Hallam, Councilmember Hallam, asked if we might be able to ask questions to the presenters? Absolutely. So, please.
All right. First of all, thank you guys so much for coming here. Really appreciate it. I know I learned a lot, took a lot of notes. But I have a question about something that I think Dr. Albert said about negotiating medical debt. Was that you that brought that up? I didn't know that was a thing. I have lots of medical debt. So, can you? Was it Dr. Cohen who brought it up?
Well, no, I said it, but she also made the comment that with her daughter's debt, they negotiated it down. So, she's probably more of an expert than I am.
Sure. I think not even just for me selfishly, but for everyone.
I didn't consider myself an expert. I was just hopping mad.
Yeah.
So, I called them up, and I said, "What's this about?" You know, "She came into the emergency room because," I'm not going to mention the hospital, she begged me not to, "but because she's employed at that hospital, she works there, and you sent her to the emergency room, and I have insurance, and I know that we don't have that much of a deductible left. How is she having a $4,000 bill?" So, then they brought it down to 2,000. So, then I said, "No, that's not enough. We're not paying that." Because my daughter was going to go ahead and pay it. I said, "This is totally ridiculous. I know how much it costs to do the procedure you wanted to do, and it doesn't cost $2,000." So, then they said, "Well, we'll bring it down to 1,000, and that's the final offer." So, that's what happened.
And that was just like the 1-800 number on the back of the bill?
Yeah. I called, well, the insurance companies will tell you, because I have to do doc-to-docs where I work. And I'm serious. They'll say, "Oh, Dr. Cohen, we know you are very impassioned about your patients." So, I worried a little bit, you know, but that's what sometimes people will say. "We know you're very impassioned about..." So, I just, I just get mad, and I say, this is, you know, I say things like, with my patients, like, "So, you want me to throw the patient out on the street?" I'm serious. I just get mad, because I just think it's so wrong and so immoral and unconscionable that these kind of things happen. So, I don't curse, because I'm not a cursor, but I make it very clear.
I am.
I make it very clear that I'm not satisfied. I don't think it's right. And so, usually, usually, I get, I get some, some of my way.
Does it work when, like, just regular folks call too? You don't have to be a doctor? Yes, people nodding their heads.
That's a good point.
Okay. I'm going to try this.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And then, thank you very much for that. And then, also, I had another question from Mr. Greister. You talked about the referendum in, where did you go? There you go. You talked about the referendums, I think, in Wisconsin and somewhere else. So, I guess I'm just asking, like, I'm familiar, we passed the referendum here last year about banning solitary confinement in the jail. And I'm just wondering, is that, we collected the signatures for that. That's how we got that on the ballot to do that. So, I'm just wondering, what exactly would the referendum say? Would it just, I think you said, "Hey, Congress, please do something." But to me, that's not really enough. I'm wondering if you have a solution on something. I know the city had pursued actually buying medical debt of the, for city residents, but I'm wondering if there's something we could do that was more long-term, more sustainable via referendum?
Well, what this referendum was in Wisconsin, it said, and they--
That's Indiana. I'm sorry, that's Illinois.
Illinois. It said, "Shall the federal government create a universal national healthcare system of improved Medicare for All to ensure that all the residents of the United States receive quality healthcare that is equitable and fair from birth to death?" And that was the question. And it passed in Edwardsville, Illinois, '64, and Urbana, Illinois. 85% of the voters said yes. So, basically, what I say that it is, it's an organizing tool to help bring pressure and more people getting, because that was kind of the whole theme of our approach here, is that we can't, if you can't go to your legislator, and then they fight for it in D.C. or whatever, if they just ignore you, which is unfortunately the history, then we have to realize that the issue is, it's a shifting of the balance of power. So, the people have the power, and the only way to do that is, a referendum is one tool to help push the issue forward.
Okay. So, I understand that. So, it's kind of more weighted than a, like you said, a resolution, which has been done before.
Absolutely.
But what I'm asking is, I want something legally binding, something mandatory. Can you give us a couple suggestions? I know something that came to mind when you were talking about the cost of insurance premiums for county employees was like, could we legislate, you know, that county employees don't pay anything, any contribution towards insurance? I'm just trying to spitball and think of what are some actually tangible legislation that we could do that is not, "Please do this thing that you should have done a long time ago," but is more actually enforceable and tangible?
Well, I think that our whole approach is that the solution is what we're saying, a national, single payer solution. Anything else, like, for instance, would it be beneficial if the drug, or excuse me, if Congress, or you could negotiate prices for drugs, which the VA does now? The answer would, yeah, that would be a radical change, which would impact the profits. So, you might want to, I mean, could you, could you pass a resolution on the county council here and say, "Well, instead of we buying up medical debt, why doesn't UPMC and Highmark and Humann and all the corporations donate, you know, $5 million each to the county?"
I would love to force them to do that, especially the not-for-profit ones.
Right. Yeah. I just think that sometimes people, I hate to say it, they're looking for love in all the wrong places. And it's like, it's like, you're not going to solve this problem until we change the method of the healthcare delivery system. And that's, that's why it's such a monumental task. It would be like saying, "Well, let's have, you know, women's right to vote, but you know what? We'll only let the women who are over 50 vote this year, and next year, we'll take care of you." And it's kind of like, you can try to do things like that, but you really have to create this, and the point would be different if there wasn't any public support for it. There's massive public support, and we have to figure out ways to do what you're talking about that are maybe just short-term, but cut at the heart of the system.
Yeah.
And I think that's really what we need to look at, in addition to focusing on the big prize.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, there was one place, it's called Libby, Montana, and they somehow, with the help of their federal congressperson, they had had some kind of devastating event similar to what happened in East Palestine.
Vermiculite. There's a vermiculite plant in Libby.
Yes, yes. And they got everybody in the town on Medicare.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Was it like an emergency declaration?
I don't know all the--
That enabled that?
It's, there's a provision for it.
Senator Max Bockus, who had the doctors arrested in the Senate, he then went and said, "I want all the citizens of Libby, Montana to get Medicare benefits, because they're poisoned by a mining company."
And there's a provision in the ACA that allows for that to happen. And so, we actually are working with some of the people in East Palestine along those lines to see if they can get an emergency declaration there. But yeah, that's another thing.
Yeah. And I know our air here has been being poisoned by fracking for longer than I've been alive. And so, I'm just wondering if anyone else has tried something similar, but I will look to Libby, Montana and check that out.
Yep.
And one of the last things, one of the shorter-term things you can do is, you could, you could literally make public the amount of people that have medical debt that are poor in for UPMC or Highmark and say, "Why don't you publicly eliminate their medical debt?"
Especially the ones that work for you and are insured by your insurance.
Right. I mean, I think you could do things like that in addition to what we're talking about is building a stronger public presence. The more pressure we have, the alternatives and the potentialities change. If you change the balance of power, the options begin to change. If you don't have, you know, that's why, you know, they say, "Well, we're not going to do anything." As long as you say you're not going to do anything, then the options to do little things are less. The more movement you have, the more chance you're going to get to do real things.
Yeah. By the way, Libby, Montana, there's a, there's a very good TED Talk. It was delivered by Margaret Heffernan. It's called, aptly entitled, "The Dangers of Willful Blindness." And it is about, you know, the saga of Libby, Montana and what played out in that community. So, I'm going to ask if there are any, if there are other members of council who would like to--
Ladies could go first, if you will. I just have a statement. That's all.
You said ladies first.
I did.
Okay. And while, we have two other members of council who have joined us. Council President Katina is on the line, as well as Councilmember Palmasino. And I wonder if either of you have a question you'd like to pose to the presenters this evening?
People are present or first?
I don't. I would just like to thank everyone for their time, obviously, this evening. I learned a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr.
And my colleague, Mr. Macy, would like to say something as well. Please.
Thank you, Chairman. And I want to thank everybody for being here, and I can't wait to hear from the rest of the audience, but thank you all for your presentations. I certainly learned a lot. You know, it's, it is a shame and a travesty in this country, one of the wealthiest countries in the world, or the most wealthiest country in the world, that we can't have the best healthcare provided to everyone. It's a shame that we have to reach out to our friends, put together fundraisers, and believe it or not, there's a medical facility in eastern Pennsylvania that has actually come out with a GoFundMe page to help pay for their services out there. I remember when, before Dr. Hacker left, she did a study on all 13 districts in Allegheny County. And I'm from the Mon Valley. The Mon Valley came in at 13th with some of the, just, some of the same things, the statistics that you have said, infant mortality. Black men in Mon Valley have a shorter lifespan, by six to eight years than others. I've been very blessed, and I, I went through, I'm a cancer survivor, I'm also an open-heart survivor, and I guess cavalierly, I thought, "Ah, everybody, everybody gets taken care of." Well, not only have I found that not to be true, but certainly, your statistics and your presentations have really brought this to my attention. I'm really concerned for the health and welfare of our citizens, our poor, our indigent. And, you know, a lot of things we see along the highways and byways with some of our homelessness, I wonder if that can be corrected through mental health and other issues that we could provide. But keep in mind, Allegheny County does try to do its best within its purview. We do have more programs in Allegheny County to help people than any other county in Pennsylvania. The problem is, a lot of people, or maybe too proud, we just don't ask. And to keep some of our senior people in their homes with assistance through the Area Agency on Aging, there's a statistic there, too. Their life expectancy is 10 years longer if they're in their own facility, their own homes. So, I know that there's a lot of loved ones who want to help, but they need help, too. So, there's opportunities for people to get assistance, so they can get a break. I want to thank you so much for being here, and I'm moved by what we really need to do in this country. And I agree with you. We may not do it tomorrow, but today's a start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, why don't we go to our, oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, Councilmember Ben.
Chair, Councilman Macy just moved me to speak.
That's good.
You always do, Mr. Macy. So, one, I wanted to put a face to this. Thank you all for coming to speak. I am one of those people who were kicked off the rolls, so I wanted to put a face to that. And I am struggling to get insurance. I just started a new job, and the struggle is real, dealing with an HR person who maybe should not be an HR person. Different story. So, yeah, you know, going through and living very fragile, because you don't have health insurance is, is an ordeal. And, you know, very recently, my, some of my colleagues know this, I was institutionalized at the end of July in the mental health facility. So, also impacted by mental health is also being, you know, another component to this challenge. And so, and getting medical debt because of that is another component on top of that. So, I wanted to put a face to this story. Sitting on this dais does not mean that you are exempt from experiencing these challenges. And I wanted to make sure that folks know that this is not a challenge that only people out there are experiencing. It is right here in this room. And so, again, it is not just the indigent, the poor, and the homeless. I am none of those. Well, maybe indigent, but, but yeah. So, I just wanted to share that, because I wanted to make sure that, you know, we are, we are actually seeing ourselves and sharing who we are for real, and that there is a face to these stories, and that we're just not speaking theoretically, that we are actually seeing who these people, who we are. And that when we're talking about the however many numbers that were kicked off the rolls, it's just not some fictitious number. These are real people that were kicked off the rolls. These are real people that have no coverage right now. These are real people that are going without insurance. These are real people that are getting bills in the mail from services that they may have received before getting kicked off. And now, those bills are now coming in, because they were not billed before they got kicked off, and now those bills are now being kicked back to them. So, thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of council who have a question they'd like to hear or comment? Okay. So, why don't we go to those who have signed up to speak this evening, and I'll turn to Mr. Barker to get that rolling.
First up is Catherine Neely. She'll be followed by John Rice.
So, I'm Kate Neely. I'm a family doctor, been practicing in Allegheny County for 30 years. And they did a wonderful job of explaining the problem, so I'm going to try to bring it home and make it as personal as I can. Maybe three years ago, I lost a patient. It was because of medical debt. About five years prior to that, our office mailed out colon cancer screening kits to all our patients. Now, I'd like to tell you that that was really putting patients first, but honestly, that was because the hospital system wanted to get the colon cancer screening rate high enough that they could prove their quality was good. Okay? When you mail things to patients, it doesn't come with informed consent. He did his screening, because it went out with my name on it, and I said he should do it, so he did it. His came back positive. Little did he-- Little did he know that his very basic but affordable health insurance only covered screening colonoscopies. Now he had a positive, his was diagnostic. He already had debt. He wasn't willing to make that debt bigger. He had kids, he needed to work, he needed to support his family, he couldn't afford a couple thousand dollars for a colonoscopy procedure. So he decided to take a gamble, gambling that the blood on his screening test was just a hemorrhoid, because, you know, usually that's all it is. Four years later, he lost that bet. All right. At that point, he was diagnosed with metastatic colon cancer. He couldn't work, he needed chemotherapy. Now, ironically, he qualified for medical assistance, which would have covered the original procedure. Instead, it covered the cost of a year's worth of chemotherapy treatments and surgery, and then he died anyways and couldn't support his family. That's what medical debt does to citizens of Allegheny County. All right. Since I haven't been told I'm at my three minutes yet, I'm now working in urgent care in a, for a private company. I hear medical debt discussions in a different way every day. People come to the front desk, they want to be seen, and I hear the front desk person say, "Well, you have an outstanding balance with us of $675. If you want to be seen today, you have to pay at least half of that right now, and your copay is $75." An awful lot of them turn around and walk out of the waiting room. I have no idea if they're able to get care someplace. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
John Rice, followed by David Hughes.
Hi. Thanks. Thanks for holding this hearing, councilmembers. A Google search of the phrase "medical debt horror stories" returns over 18 million results in less than half a second. I can add "only in America" to that and have an accurate bumper sticker assessment of what our current for-profit healthcare system delivers to Americans. The United States spends nearly twice as much on healthcare on average as do other peer democracies, while at the same time ranking last in a measure of healthcare access and quality with those peer nations. Where America is number one, however, is in the creation of medical debt borne by the patients of our healthcare system. Here are a few lowlights of our broken system. Even if you have health insurance, Americans can pay upwards of $4,000 a year just for their share of coverage. Plans featuring high-cost sharing, high deductibles, lifetime caps, and out-of-pocket costs are the first reason why people have medical bills they can't afford to pay even though they have medical insurance. 63% of people with medical debt had health insurance when treatment began. Cost-sharing and point-of-use costs are purposefully built into the system by insurance companies to reduce access to care and thereby increase their profits. These hurdles to care are absent in our peer nations' healthcare delivery because in those countries, people only have to worry about getting well, not how they'll have to pay for it. Health insurance companies and hospitals are incredibly difficult to deal with. Questioning charges from either is a task many people won't attempt. People often lose their healthcare coverage when they lose their jobs or go on strike. Without coverage, any health emergency that arises can quickly result in staggering medical bills with bankruptcy following. Without a job, many are priced out of traditional insurance or COBRA coverage. Once someone is in medical debt, the situation can often snowball. Many avoid seeking care and become sicker with treatable chronic conditions. Worse still, hospitals and doctors sometimes won't see patients with medical debt, even those in the middle of treatment. Cancer patients are over 2.5 times more likely to file for bankruptcy than those without cancer, and bankruptcy puts them at a higher risk of early death. To summarize, about 2/3 of U.S. adults with medical debt say they or a member of their household have put off getting needed care because of the costs. Medical bills are the number-one cause of bankruptcy in the U.S. Around 1 in 8 adults with medical debt have been forced to declare bankruptcy. Medical debt is part and parcel of a for-profit healthcare system. It creates a barrier to care for too many Americans. The situation continually worsens. I searched "healthcare crisis in America" and it returned over 670 million results in less than a half a second. Few beyond health insurance executives, hospital administrators, and the 1% would deny that this crisis exists. The question I'll end with is, how long will we continue to ignore how the rest of the industrialized world delivers healthcare to their citizens at a lower cost, with better outcomes, and be satisfied with coming in dead last? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is David Hughes, followed by Anthony Fierillo.
Thank you. It's nice to see a council so in tune with the issues and the people who are victims of those issues. Let me just say, healthcare is unique, really. You cannot live without it, right? Can't live without it. That makes it unique. But we have to have it to be healthy and to survive. But it's the only product sold that when you buy it, you don't know how much it is. And the, sorry. The privatization of healthcare is a huge, huge problem. Half of Medicare has been privatized. I don't think the people in this country know this. I don't think the people in this country know what Medicare Advantage is. Medicare Advantage is private insurance. A beautiful system set up as a public service has been destroyed by privatization. And who's doing the privatization? Well, you hear about United Healthcare, but you don't know who's behind them. They're owned by Vanguard, and BlackRock, and Fidelit, you know? I want to tell you a quick story. I see I have exactly a minute and a half. I was on vacation in Mexico 10 years ago. I was floating very peacefully in the ocean when a wave took me towards the shore, very fast, a six-foot wave, and slammed me upside down off the bottom of the ocean. And I was in pain for days. And finally, I went to the nearest clinic, a little hospital, and I walked in, and I was waiting, and I thought they were going to ask me for my ID. No. I'm American, but they didn't ask me for my national ID, my passport, they didn't ask me for insurance. The doctor saw me, he interviewed me, he used a typewriter, and he ordered x-rays, and he gave me an $8 bill. Can you imagine? That's the difference between the world and America. Thanks.
Thank you very much. By the way, I should tell you that I had a very similar experience in the Czech Republic, where I had to visit a hospital, a very Soviet-era hospital, and I needed an antibiotic, and I think it was $4. And I, anyway, thank you.
Hello, I'm Tony Fierillo. I am a semi-retired physician myself, so I'm going to echo a little bit of what Dr. Neely mentioned. And I have many, many stories I can tell you about horrors of dealing with insurance companies, horrors of patients refusing care because of costs. But I actually want to tell you a story about a friend of mine. This friend of mine, I spent time with coaching youth sports in Allegheny County, and he died unnecessarily at age 51 because of lack of insurance. He was a son of a physician, well-educated, and worked jobs for all of his life. He actually, the last thing he was doing was sales, but on 100% commission, and slowly his savings dwindled and dwindled and dwindled. The last five years were difficult to start off with, and then he was laid off in 2012. He was offered COBRA, as so many people partying are, but COBRA, as you know, will be extremely expensive because it's the pooled cost of that workforce. He declined that, not just for himself, but also for his family. So his family went uninsured for some time. He searched for about eight months looking for a job and failed to find that. One day, he was out with his son to purchase sporting good equipment. Standing at the cash register with his 17-year-old son on his side, he fell over and went to the ground. EMT was called very, very quickly, and emergency medics came, and he was pulseless. They applied CPR, took him to a local reputable hospital that has actually very good cardiac care, was pronounced dead in the emergency room at age 51. It really surprised me because I watched him on the field playing with the kids and how active he was, and he didn't, to me as a physician, seem to have any cardiac disease. Yet, his family told me after his death that for the last four to five months, he'd been having chest pain, and chest pain that was accelerating in its intensity, to the point it was occurring at rest. And if anyone realized that, that is an unstable angina, and that is a marker for coronary disease. But he held that from his family, held that from his friends, because he knew if he underwent evaluation by a physician, a stress test, a cardiac catheterization, probable implant, at that time in 2013 would have cost him out-of-pocket $30,000 to $34,000. Accelerate that. That would now be $65,000 out-of-pocket, and he didn't even have money to do that. So he died an unnecessary death because of the lack of insurance, and I tell you this story to honor him. So thank you.
Next up is Emily DeFerrari.
Thank you very much for the hearing and all the comments and the questions from council and the presentation so far. I don't have a medical debt catastrophe to relate, but I want to remind you of things that you already know, and I'm going to say things that have already been said, but I wrote them down, so I'm going ahead anyway. My first example comes from years working in maternity care. It was not unusual, over and over again, to meet women who, for the first time, they were arriving in labor, not having had any prenatal care because they hadn't had insurance, they could not afford the bill. They may have fallen through the crack between having too much money to qualify for medical assistance, but not having enough money for insurance or paying out-of-pocket. And you know, paying out-of-pocket requires you to pay the entire astronomical charge, if you've ever looked at your own bills, not the fraction that the insurance companies have negotiated to pay. Or, as happened to a colleague of mine, a woman might have a job, she's got employer-sponsored healthcare, she becomes pregnant, she develops a complication, she's hospitalized or put on bedrest, she loses her job, she loses her insurance, and then she has to forego her prenatal care while she's carrying a high-risk pregnancy. And a very, very simple thing like not screening for and catching and treating anemia can predispose a woman to a postpartum hemorrhage, one of the main causes of maternal mortality. And here in Pittsburgh and Allegheny County, you've already heard that we are a leader in that statistic. The second example is at the other end of the life cycle. When my mom went into rehab in the summer of 2020, remember? 2020, the summer COVID, and what was happening in nursing homes? We, she'd broken her pelvis, we couldn't see her, it was very, very difficult to communicate with her, but we also had this added stress of not knowing if her insurance was going to pay for what the doctor said she needed. We didn't know if she'd be coming home before she could walk, we didn't know what to prepare for, we didn't know when to prepare. It all ended up fine, she came home, but it was all very, very rocky. And the facility told us that if she'd had traditional Medicare, there wouldn't have been any problem, but the Advantage Plan that she chose was the worst. Finally, my last and third example is also from my family. A young woman I'm related to made an appointment for reproductive healthcare at her primary care office. She'd received this type of reproductive healthcare before. She showed up for her appointment, she showed her insurance card, she received the care. She subsequently moved, changed her address, but didn't give that appointment another thought. Two years later, she receives a notice from a collection agency about an outstanding bill to the tune of $2,000. That collection is being negotiated right now. I can talk to you about that. Since she doesn't have the $2,000 to pay a bill, she would not have incurred if she had known her insurance company wouldn't have paid for it. One should not need to hire a private detective to find out if one's insurance is going to pay the bill for a particular service. And I'll end by noting that this is a testament to the priority of the healthcare industry when your doctor's office can't find you, but the collection agency that they turn you over to can. Thanks. Thanks very much.
Next up is Carl Redwood.
Happy to be here. I just wanted to share some things from a recent report from the Commonwealth Fund that came out the week before last, and it mainly focused on what the federal government in different states are doing around medical debt. However, it didn't talk about the big solution that we're talking about. So I think it's really important that you read the study, but you got to put a grain of salt in when you read it, because it's not looking at a solution, it's just looking at what people are doing now. And these short-term things that we're going to do here in Allegheny County and people are doing everywhere have to be linked to the larger-term solution. But just from the Commonwealth Fund report released September 7th, "Medical debt negatively affects many Americans, especially people of color, women, and low-income families. This debt can take many forms, including past due payments, directly owed to the healthcare provider, ongoing payment plans, money owed to a bank or collection agency that has been assigned or sold to medical debt, credit card debt from medical bills, money borrowed from family and friends to pay for medical bills. A significant amount of medical debt is either sold or assigned to third-party debt-collecting agencies, as Emily talked about, who often engage in aggressive efforts to collect on the debt, creating stress for patients. Both hospitals and debt collectors have won judgments against patients, allowing them to take money directly from a patient's paycheck or place liens on a patient's home. In some cases, patients have lost their homes. Medical debt can also have a negative impact on a patient's credit score." As we were talking before and shared in the beginning, the solution to medical debt is taking private profit out of healthcare. We need universal, single-payer public health system, and that's what we should be working for. And it's important we keep it in the forefront of our vision while we work on these other kinds of things, like, for example, how we do referendums at Allegheny County. We may need to change some rules so we, it's easier to do, because what we can do is we can be an activist county council, and we could organize our communities to really work towards a vision of a future that we're trying to create. But the referendum idea is a good idea, this is a good one to maybe start around. I don't know the actual details behind the scenes of what needs to change, but we need to figure out how to change it. The other thing we can do, 36% of UPMC workers are in debt to UPMC for medical care. We, as a county, need to put our full support behind the worker's ability to organize, so at least on that level, they'll have, it's another tool, and that's still a short-term tool. If they have a union, they can negotiate their healthcare, but still, like, like us at the county, every year, healthcare goes up, goes up, goes up, and whether at UPMC or wherever, you're still buying healthcare from some private provider, and it's going to go up every year. But I think it's important that we become activists, Allegheny County, activists, Pittsburgh, all of our different municipalities need to be more activists. The people are already ready for the change, we just have to organize our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Matthew Rubin, to be followed by Sandra Fox. Mr. Rubin is not with us. Ms. Fox?
My name is Sandra Fox, and I'm a resident of Churchillboro in Allegheny County. Last week, my PCP prescribed an EpiPen for me for a bee sting allergy. On Friday, I got a text from the Giant Eagle letting me know the medication was ready for pickup. The cost to me, $520.76. The next morning, I called the pharmacy to make sure it was not a mistake. I have a Medicare Part D policy through a company called WellCare. I was told no mistake, I have a $500 deductible that was applied. Interesting, as my other medications are generally under $20 with no deductible. So I guess life-saving drugs are in a different class in the formulary. All this to say that many medications in this country are unaffordable for most Americans, even those with insurance. But my bill for the EpiPen pales in comparison to many other life-saving drugs. In fact, the most expensive drug in the world, developed by a company in King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, and approved last year by the FDA, is $3.5 million for one dose, good for eight years of hemgenics to treat hemophilia B, a genetic blood clotting disorder. To say this is troubling demeans the value of life, it is an abomination. Medical debt is a symptom of what's wrong with healthcare in this country. We have ceded our medical care to a profit-driven industry, and we are losing, losing financial and emotional security. and emotional security, best treatment, and worst of all lives. Health care needs to be free at the point of service, including for medications, and paid for through progressive taxes, with the wealthy paying their fair share. We need to improve Medicare, extend it to cover all medically necessary care, negotiate lower drug prices on all medications, and expand Medicare to cover all residents of this country, cradle to grave. It is possible. When you take profits advertising and marketing obscene executive salaries and the cost of lobbying out of the equation, you have money to pay for health care. Traditional Medicare has an administrative overhead of less than 2%. I ask that Allegheny County Council reexamine their Home Rule Charter and find a way to put a referendum on the ballot, and like Carl said, if we need to, to change the Home Rule Charter to allow voter referendums to be easier to put on the ballot, so that voters can be asked the same question asked in two townships in Illinois last November. I won't repeat the question, it's in my notes, I'll give you a copy, that Ed said, and that referendum passed widely. Thank you to Allegheny County Council for agreeing to conduct this public hearing. Now let's find a way to take the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Teresa Chalich, followed by Sam Schmidt.
My name is Teresa Chalich, and I live in Skora Hill, and I am a registered nurse. I thank you for this opportunity to address the lingering problem of this county's medical debt. I think that medical debt will be compounded by the current purge of the medical assistance recipients. There is now a disruption in how their ongoing care will be managed. How will an individual with a chronic illness continue with his or her treatment without going into debt? What was the follow-up plan for continuing coverage for individuals and their families? And that's been my major concern when we start seeing all these thousands of people losing their medical assistance. And I wrote to Governor Shapiro and asked him what the plan was. You just can't have somebody who has diabetes not have ongoing care. And I also asked my state representative, Dan Frankel, about it. So there. I know as the doctors and nurses, this is one of our first thoughts, was how do you keep ongoing care? So as not to incur debt, will people forego care? This can only exacerbate the problem of medical debt. In Pennsylvania, the numbers are recorded in the thousands. What is alarming is that I could not find an exact number. The numbers range from 90,000, according to the Philadelphia Inquirer, to 150,000. According to Spotlight PA, 184,000 Pennsylvanians lost coverage, 104,000 were deemed ineligible, 80,000 were cleared due to clerical errors. The most alarming report about this medical assistance purge is that state officials have said that it's not clear how many children who were disenrolled from Medicaid were able to get coverage through CHIP, the Children's Health Insurance Program. And this references from WESA inbox. I don't read the Post-Gazette, so I have to rely on Spotlight PA and WESA inbox. So I could not find the number of Allegheny County residents who lost their medical assistance coverage in this purge. This medical assistance purge reminds me of how steelworkers, Bob Macy, and related industrial workers in the 1980s lost their jobs accompanied by losing their health insurance. What a cruel time it was. One minute you have coverage, and then the next you can go into debt. I recall the Patrick of Care that was insufficient. Who wanted to incur health bills? Now, here we are, 40 years later, and there is still not the political will, the guts to institute a Medicare-for-all program to provide universal, comprehensive coverage for health care from birth to death. A seamless system where children, the disabled, individuals, and families do not have to scurry for their health care at the whim of our elected officials and end up in medical debt. Thank you, thank you for this time.
Thank you. Sam Schmidt, to be followed by Thomas Brockmeyer.
My name is Sam Schmidt. I just want to reiterate what people have already said here, and just say thank you so much, council, for holding this time for public comment. It's very important, and I'm glad to hear that you all are learning a lot. That feels great to hear. I feel very supported right now, so I hope that we do follow through with some of this in policy. Also, thank you to the presenters, thank you for your expertise, and the many medical professionals in the audience here that have already said what I'm about to say, but like others, it's prepared, so I'm going to read it. I stand before you today to advocate for a cause that transcends political boundaries and represents a fundamental human right, health care for all through a single payer system. In this era of progress and social responsibility, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that every member of our community, regardless of their economic circumstances, has access to the essential health care services they need. The staggering burden of medical debt continues to plague our society and is especially pronounced among employees of UPMC, a significant health care provider in our county. Mr. Redwood gave a stat earlier that 36% of UPMC employees are burdened by medical debt to UPMC. But when you're considering low-wage workers, that's the workers that make less than $20 an hour, that number jumps up to 51%. So 51% of UPMC's low-wage workers find themselves ensnared by the shackles of medical debt. This not only undermines their financial stability, but also perpetuates a cycle of dependence on their employers for health care coverage. It is an injustice that compromises the dignity and freedom of our citizens. This is especially true, considering UPMC, a nonprofit, is worth a staggering $26 billion. That's no small number. The current health care system in our country is inherently flawed. It is a system that prioritizes profit over people, leaving countless individuals and families struggling to make ends meet while battling illness. It is a system that forces people to choose between paying for their medical care and putting food on their tables, or keeping a roof over their heads. This is not the compassionate, equitable society we should strive to create. As long as we continue to support a for-profit health care system, the most vulnerable among us will continue to be forced to gamble with their lives. The rest of what I have here, my statement is redundant, so I'm just going to leave you with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thomas Brockmeyer.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Brockmeyer. I live in McCandless, and I spent over 30 years practicing orthopedic surgery in Allegheny and surrounding counties. I am proud to say my practice never turned any patient away, regardless of their insurance status or ability to pay. As a result, when I retired six years ago, I felt I knew all that I would ever need to know about the inequities of our health care system, but that was not the case. My experiences as a patient have changed that. Six months into retirement, I felt severe fatigue, and I found out that my low blood counts were due to a form of cancer called multiple myeloma. And that was how my health care education and my activism with Physicians for a National Health Program really began. I was placed on a three-drug course of chemotherapy, which gradually brought my cancer under control. But a further shock to my wife and me was the cost of my major chemotherapy drug, Revlimid, produced by Celgene Corporation. My monthly dose of 21 pills, which literally costs a few dollars to manufacture, was costing Medicare nearly $16,000 per month. Our co-pays alone were more than $800 each and every month, which works out to around $10,000 per year. Now, I'm from a working-class Ohio family, and was blessed with 25 first cousins in my generation. Given the cost of my medication, it's become sickeningly obvious to me that only two or three of my 25 cousins would have the means to pay for my kind of care. And that has really angered me. No American, no child, no senior, nobody in between should be forced to choose between their medicine and their food or housing, which is what is happening every day in Allegheny County. The solution to this problem can only be found in improved Medicare for all. This will provide universal coverage for all Americans, no co-pays or deductibles, coverage of dental, vision, and hearing problems, long-term care coverage, elimination of the greedy, private health insurance business, and reining in the excess profits of Big Pharma with fair negotiations on drug prices. Because of the insurance and drug cost savings with improved Medicare for all, analyses by many economists on both the left and the right have shown that we can do all of this at less cost than we are paying for our current wasteful, grossly unfair, and inhumane system. I welcome any questions you may have, and thank you for your attention.
And the last individual we had who signed up for this evening, Lorraine Starsky.
Yes, I'm a longtime registered nurse with a lot of experience in public health. And medical debt, much like the recent COVID pandemic, places a disproportionate toll on the working class and marginalized people. And adding to this burden is the fact that the public health emergency ended in May 2023. That means that free at-home COVID tests are less and less available. The federal government is no longer purchasing kits and distributing them. People are now forced to pay out of pocket for at-home testing kits. Medicare, medical assistance, and private insurance does not pay for them. So we know that new variants are circulating and that COVID rates are rising across the nation, including here in Allegheny County. So the cost of these at-home tests are a financial burden that is only going to have negative impact on people's ability to get a timely diagnosis and prevent transmission. An illness like COVID adds to the burden of unreimbursed care that drives medical debt. For example, a single working parent who has two children, or whatever, could spend a minimum of $120 out of pocket to do testing for him or herself initially and then post-COVID. This is, to me, untenable. So I want to point out that the Philadelphia Department of Health has just established a program that distributes thousands of free COVID tests in working-class and marginalized areas. Somehow, they obtained the money, and we should do something similar here. So if Allegheny County no longer has funds from the special COVID funds, then we need to turn to local foundations, and we should go to UPMC and Allegheny Health Network and say, join us in getting tests out to marginalized, working-class people so they can be tested. Because we are heading into, I don't think it's going to be like what we saw in the past, but nonetheless, vulnerable people are going to get sick and they can't even test. We should have walk-in testing sites also, because not everybody has vehicles. Because right now, the Allegheny County Health Department is telling people, oh, go to this place, go to that place. It's drive-in testing. I've called them. You cannot go and walk in. Seniors and a lot of poor people do not have vehicles.
Thank you very much. We do have one more speaker who's not on the agenda, but I'd like to invite a city councilwoman, a city council member, Barb Warwick. So thanks for coming tonight.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming out. I appreciate it. So I just wanted to come up quickly, just to, so Councilman Wilson could not be here tonight, but I did want to just talk about his bill that we passed to take $1 million in ARPA funding and to buy back medical debt through RIP Medical Debt for Pittsburgh residents of low and moderate income. You know, we can't get the personal information of those folks, but part of RIP Medical Debt's process is to solicit, you know, they let people know when they've cleared the debt, and then they also solicit their stories. So hopefully, we will get to hear from a number of Pittsburghers. But it should be noted, and we've heard it a number of times tonight, you know, this is the city of Pittsburgh spending $1 million to relieve our residents of medical debt in a city where we have these giant medical institutions like UPMC that could, you know, and by the way, RIP, the model is to buy the debt for cents on the dollar, right? So you can buy large amounts of debt. But, you know, basically, UPMC and other hospitals could simply waive that debt tomorrow, right? I mean, even on a PR level, it's a little mind-boggling that they don't do that. But at any rate, here we are. Just since I'm up here, also, just on a personal note, you know, we've heard a lot of stories, and so, you know, I have four kids, and, you know, just off the top of my head here, just as we're sitting here, I was sort of like going through, well, okay, you know, I've paid $3,000 ambulance bill once, you know, when we were on vacation in Michigan and I had to go a long distance. I, myself, I've paid over $200 copay for like breast MRIs, you know, basic screenings that have history. With my kids, you know, going to the doctor, it's $100 here, it's $200 there, these bills, they just come in, and, you know, you don't even bat an eye, right? You're just like, oh, okay. Right now, currently, on my desk at my house, I have a $900 bill for an ER visit because my kid got bit by a dog. He didn't even need a Band-Aid, right? We just went, just in case, his pediatrician said, oh, he should go, just in case. Not even a Band-Aid. And that's all with insurance, right? That's all with insurance. And switching back and forth between my husband's insurance or the exchange, oh, which one's better, you know, which one's, I'm trying to do those calculations. You know, one of my kids had a major medical issue, and, you know, we were able to get some supplemental, but it was so hard to even get that supplemental coverage, right? For those, you know, big scary events. You know, we can handle it, my family, we're fortunate, right? We have the disposable income, but, you know, four kids, a working family, between $50,000 and $80,000 a year, I mean, this just kills you on top of rent, utilities, your car note, your groceries, you know, it's just not sustainable. So anyway, thank you all so much. Thank you for holding this, council, and, you know, hopefully, we can work together and tackle this problem.
Thank you very much, Barb. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight, for being here, and for your counsel in many respects, and obviously, your experiences. And I would say that, you know, we do a lot of talking in this country about supporting the culture of life, and, you know, I often wonder what that means. And certainly, leaving here tonight, you know, I wonder again. But I thank you for your willingness to come forward and to share your experiences and your expertise, and we will not disappoint. I mean, we will certainly, certainly will take this to heart. I think we have members here this evening who I think would be very happy to get involved in trying to figure out what next steps might look like, and we will look to you for more guidance and certainly stay in touch and draw from your experiences and wisdom as well as we move forward. So thank you all again, and I appreciate your being here. Thank you.